Ladies and gentlemen, good evening to you and hello to everyone that's tuning in tonight on the television for the City Council meeting of July 19th, 2016. Temperature 150 outside. We're glad to have those that are, didn't make it here tonight. At this time, I'm going to call on, as the first item, I'm going to call on Councilman David Humphreys for the prayer. Before he does, I would like for us to remember, let's have a moment of silent prayer among yourselves for all, you know, we didn't have a July 4th meeting, and this is the first one actually we've had in July, but so much has happened in this month, and so much tragedy's happened. There's so many people grieving right now, and there's so many people that were with us then that aren't with us now. Having said that, I would like to ask that we just have a moment of silent prayer for all the families of the departed and certainly the that are survived.
Thank you. Prayer by Councilman Humphreys, please.
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for all you provide. I ask for your blessing and guidance of this body as we conduct the business of the city. Lord, please continue to oversee and guide us in our daily lives, public and private. I ask your blessings on those grieving for the fallen law enforcement officers in the United States. I ask for your blessings on our citizens and on our troops stationed away from home, and pray they return safely. Father, please watch over our first responders and their families as they protect us from harm. Lord, also ask for continued forgiveness of sins in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay? Okay, thank you, everyone. I'd like to have under item C, the adoption of the agenda, and I would like to add item 10A, which has just come in as a budget amendment and contract. So there will be a 10A if you adopt this agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor, raise your hand, please. Unanimous. Okay, item D is approval of the minutes of March 29th, 2016. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Gallagher, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Pierceall? Okay, discussion, all in favor, raise your hand, please. All right. Okay. Had to look to see if there's public expression, and there's not tonight. So that's item E. Let's move to the consent agenda, and that's items 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, and maybe everyone hopefully who's had a chance to go over all of that, or go over that and see other, is there errors? A motion for the adoption, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, unanimous, sharing, and it's, that's 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, the consent agenda. The regular agenda, item 6 is a public hearing, a resolution of the City Council for the City of Gastonia, North Carolina, to close a portion of Pamela Street. That is item number 6, exhibit number 6, and I certainly declare the public hearing open, and would call on Mr. Smith, Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is the petition to close the unopened street at the end of Pamela. It was shown as a possible connection on some maps. I don't know that there was ever any intention to do that, but this is just to remove that as a possibility, to make it clear that there's going to be no intention by the city to build a street on that property. There is already a sewer line in the property, so the city is retaining a utility easement on the property. We are the adjoining property owner on one half, so we will get half of the closed street title to it, to the midpoint, and then the other adjoining property owners, their name appears on the map of the agenda, they have been notified. And I'll be glad to take any questions that I can answer, and no one signed up to speak, but I believe there is some interest here tonight.
This is sort of looking at the map, it sort of reminds me a little bit years ago in this council. This is very similar to the back of Planters Ridge, is it not? You know, it had a little cul-de-sac at the end, and we just needed it, it was just there, it's a sidewalk.
These instances occur all over the city, actually. We have lots of unopened streets that were platted but then never built. The procedure is a bit cumbersome, honestly. You have to advertise the public hearing, and you have to advertise the whole resolution four times. And several years ago, Representative Will Newman passed a bill, tried to introduce a bill that would do away with that and just do an ad, the same way you can do a very small ad for a huge rezoning that impacts, you know, many, many people in many, many neighborhoods, but the North Carolina Press Association and the Gazette specifically lobbied against that because they want the whole text of the ad published four times a week for four weeks. And so that was part of the delay in getting this on the agenda.
Okay, so that's your presentation under this public hearing. Are there those that would like to speak regarding this, in this hearing, regarding this particular?
There wasn't anyone signed up, Mr. Mayor.
No one signed up, okay. Okay, question, or you?
Oh, I just, I know we've talked about this before, and I think everybody just about agrees. I was going to say, since no one signed up, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing and approve the resolution as presented in our agenda.
Second. Motion is to close the public hearing and to approve the, as suggested here. And there is a second by Mr. Gallagher. Any other questions? All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, and it is unanimous. So, thank you very much, and Pamela Street portion is closed. Okay, item 7 is a resolution approving the revised agreement for joint store operations between the Town of Dallas, North Carolina, and the Gastonia ABC System. And the presentation again by Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Town of Dallas has an ABC store, but due to economy of scale, they approached the City of Gastonia about operating the store in 2006. We've been operating it since that time under a lease, and it's time to renew the agreement. The changes are very slight, just provides that revenue's going to be distributed annually now rather than quarterly, and if the store needs to move its real estate lease, they can terminate that. And except for that, the agreement is the same from 2006. It's been a mutually beneficial relationship. Councilman McAtier is the liaison to the ABC Board, and I'm sure this has been discussed at their board meetings, he may have some further input on this matter. Be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Fisher had a previous commitment, was unable to attend tonight, but he asked me to ask y'all to please vote for this. The previous contract was for 10 years, and this new one is for 10 more years. And we're fortunate to be able to run the store, it's our store, but it's in their municipality, and we hire all the people, stock the store, and do all the bookkeeping and everything, so it's been good. And our ABC system has just exceeded $10 million in sales, and Dallas is part of that, and probably slightly less than 10 percent. And so it's been a very successful operation, and I've learned all that since I was a liaison. So certainly recommend that we enter into contract with them for another 10 years.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Pierceall, was there any questions?
Question.
Yes, sir, Dr.
Councilman, you said it's our store, is it our store?
Yes, and it's, since it's in their municipality, they have to approve.
Oh, but what I'm asking, though, is, I don't know anything about the store. Is it a bricks and mortar, or is it in a leased space?
It's leased space.
Okay, so there's no, there's no real estate owned?
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
There could be.
There could be. But if it was owned, would it not be probably the responsibility of Dallas to purchase that real estate, or?
Probably it would, and that would be a much more expensive proposition for them.
Right, right.
The fact that it is a lease, and then they've got us, the agreement with us to run it, makes it profitable for them.
Yeah, great, thank you.
All right. Motion, second, any other? Yes, sir.
One or two questions.
Yes.
Dallas, still okay with the 30 percent?
I believe that they are voting on it later this month.
And they have no problem with the going to yearly instead of quarterly on the reimbursements?
Not to my knowledge, yeah. I think Mr. Fisher worked all that out.
You have a question? All right, let's vote, all in favor, the motion, please. Thank you, it is unanimous. Thank you very much. Item 8 is an interlocal agreement with Gaston County to accept the City of Gastonia's yard waste debris presentations, Mr. Michael Beeple's Assistant City Manager of Operations, and this would be exhibit number eight. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'm actually going to introduce our new Enterprise Services Director, Joe Albright, and he is going to present the information, and I'll be available for questions.
Okay, Mr. Albright.
Good evening. The purpose of this agenda item is to request your approval to approve and enter into a yard waste disposal agreement with Gaston County. For the past 10 years, we have been disposing of our yard waste at the Duke Street facility, and that is being done under a state permit for a large facility. Because of capacity and because of issues in the drying beds that are under the disposal site that were part of an old treatment facility, we needed to change how we disposed of yard waste and find a better location, and so we have, we think we have done so. We have negotiated an agreement with the county. They approved the agreement already, and they have given us a discount, basically due to volume, on the per ton disposal rate, and so that would be from $20 to $18 per ton. We will be monitoring, if this is approved, would be monitoring the disposal tonnages as well as mileage and those kind of things because of the difference in locations between the Duke Street facility and the county facility. But we would recommend that this agreement be approved and would allow us to continue to provide quality service and allow us to have a location that is more suitable for the disposal of the yard waste. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Any, yes, sir, Mr. Pierceall?
I just had one quick question. I didn't see, I saw the section about hazardous material and that kind of stuff. I know when we had, for when we were handling yard waste, the method of collection or method that residents would use to put yard waste out on the street, change like with leaves, you know, for a while it had to be in clear plastic bags, and then it was no bags. What is the procedure now? I mean, now that we're going to be taking it to the county, to, I guess, to their facility near the landfill, can residents put those back in bags? I mean, is there any procedure now that needs to be followed?
Our procedure won't change, with the exception of we are offering yard waste containers for citizens to put their yard waste in, which is like the 96 gallon rollout container, and we just have a shipment into them, just received a shipment of them and starting to ship those out to some residents who have requested those, but as far as the collection of leaves and limbs, typically that has not changed.
Okay, and those canisters are, I believe, $50 a year?
It was $50 upfront.
$50 upfront?
Yeah, yeah, and it's $50, and there's a monthly fee. There's not a monthly fee, that's right, it's just, you just have to, just for the can, and then there's no monthly fee after that.
Thank you.
And just as a matter of clarification, what we're saying to the county is yard waste, which would be your limbs and things like that. The leaves themselves are still going to go to Duke Street, so that part hasn't changed. It's the, it's the rest of it that goes.
That's correct. When we pick up, when we just do the sole, the leaf pickup and the leaf season, that'll still go to Duke Street, there is room there, and in the upper tier, which is not on the drying beds, that can handle that, and then we can still sell the black gold.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
This is also grass cuttings as well, that can go in that 96 gallon container?
Yes, sir, they can.
So it'd be grass cuttings, limbs, flower bed material, if you have that.
Yeah, we prefer not a lot of dirt, but any of those kind of things that you would typically put out for yard debris, waste, in a pile beside the street, go in the container.
Thanks.
Yes, sir, Dr.
Have you all had a chance to sharpen your pencil a little bit on how this will impact our bottom line because of the increased distance to travel to drop this off? You know, collection's going to be about the same in one regard, you know, you're still going to pick it up, but now we're going to have to haul it out to the county. So have you tried to create any estimates? I know that's just, you know, not easy, but did you do any?
What we've begun to do is look at the routes and how we pick up that material because it will change, some days of the week, some routes are closer to Duke, some will be closer to Philadelphia, and so we feel like it's still a little bit further, and so we're trying to tweak our routes and also try to look at whenever the truck is full in relationship to where it's at on the route, to try to maximize the benefits. But, so we're starting to look at that, but that really won't take place until we're in the field doing it. We've ridden some of the routes, just, you know, not picking up limbs, but, and tried to tweak that relationship between the routes, the full loads, and the actual county facility. That'll be an ongoing process.
And the only follow-up I have to that is, is there going to be a budgetary adjustment made to the solid waste budget for this, because it looks like we'll be paying a little bit more, we'll have more expense? Is that going to require a budget amendment?
We would expect that as the year progresses and we get, we get further along, that we'll know exactly what we're going to need to finish up, and we think because of some other savings and some changes in service provisions and the way we're picking up in other areas such as recycling, we had some savings there, we think that we'll be able to compensate pretty easily for this overage.
And the problem is, if we don't do this, we've got some serious work to be done at Duke Street because, see, that, it can't take anymore. So we really, this is the least expensive option that we have, but as Joe mentioned, as we get more information, we want to actually get the real numbers to be able to make sure we're budgeting correctly. So during the middle of the year, we'll be doing some adjusting.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Just a quick question. I understand that the county has already approved this on their end. Was there any discussion of any, anything that maybe we should be aware of? I mean, was it unanimous? Are they pretty much all on board without any reservation?
They were, they were in agreement. I'm not aware of any reservations being relayed to us contractually or service provision or any of those. I wasn't made aware of any issues in that regard.
Yes, sir.
Well, sir, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, sir.
To the Gaston County Yard Waste Degree, the Town of Dallas, and the City of Gastonia this part, dispose of yard waste degree at the county side, 18 hours a month, staff recommendation.
Second. A motion and a second by Mr. McAtier. Is there questions to the motion? All in favor of the motion, raise your hand, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. And Michael. Item 9 is the Farmers Market Advisory Board appointment, which is exhibit number nine, and it's fairly, work's been done for us, it looks like it's self-explanatory by Michael, I mean, excuse me, William Gross. Any questions or any comments regarding exhibit nine? Is there a motion?
It's, since I had made the original nomination of Mr. Gross, and he respectfully declined at this point, I'll make the nomination of Ms. Newton as his replacement.
Okay, Ms. Abigail Newton is to be on the, I pointed, on the Farmers Market Advisory Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, but, fourth. Any other discussion, questions? All in favor? Okay. She's there. Thank you, thank you very much. Item 9, Dr. Curlin, is the Facilities Management Committee report. I think we got it, got it apart from the agenda, but we got it. Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Facilities Management Committee met on Tuesday, the 12th, and reporting their actions at this time. The first item was concerning Gastonia Conference Center financials. Mr. Jerry Durkey was there representing the center, and as you can read, the year-to-date revenue is $403,491, to a budget of $390,717, representing a positive variance of $12,774. The net income loss through the first nine months of operation is $22,062. However, the budget loss was to be $134,274. So you can tell this is a very positive piece of news, and so we were very ecstatic to hear this, and it sounds like, you know, they are trending very positive as the year goes forward between their sales and bookings, and they're just firing on all cylinders.
Dave, I just want to say that they've been here for nine months, culinary.
Right.
And out of those nine months, three of them had positive incomes, net incomes. One was, you know, bright in September for five grand, the other one was for four grand, which is November, and April, they had $27,000 net income. That's fantastic.
Yep, yep.
I mean, they're moving towards breaking even.
Right, right, at least from the operational budget side, you know, which is, which is wonderful. So, and, you know, it was discussed at the, at the meeting that, you know, most conference centers do not begin to break even.
Right.
So if this, you know, management group does anything close to that, I mean, it's just fantastic. And of course, our staff is continuing to do a great job supporting them, and I think we're probably doing more now than ever before as, you know, a collective team to make sure the facility is, is being run properly as well as being managed from a facility, physical plant standpoint. And so we'll, we'll continue to have some challenges in those areas, but we'll continue to deal with those, and hopefully at some point in time, we'll be, hopefully getting to a point where we can put back in terms of FFE, you know, so that going forward as the carpet needs to be replaced, we've got some money to do it. So, yes, boy.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask, make a comment, ask Dr. Curlin a question, sir. I keep saying we need to have naming rights, like Wells Fargo Conference Center, Gastonia, North Carolina, and I'm sure that they're right across the street, they might want to do that, and I mentioned that several times, and I'd really like to see it, no, not Jim Gallagher Conference Center, Wells Fargo Conference Center. But I would like to see that investigated. I don't know why we couldn't do that and make a little money on that.
There was, there was a short discussion about the name that took place, not so much focused on naming rights, but more from a marketing angle because there's still kind of a misperception that a conference center is strictly for conferences, and so currently they're on a, a marketing plan to try to attract more wedding business, maybe get an annual wedding show there, and, you know, this concept of an event center, you know, besides just a conference center, is sort of important. So Mr. Durkey mentioned this, and they're still toying with, you know, that, and of course, I think you make a great idea, we'll certainly pass that along to him then, to say, hey, if, you know, we want to put it out there, and if this is something that, you know, the business community would embrace and find the right price or whatever, then they could have naming rights for X number of years. I think we'd have to do some research first, so. Any other comments on that, first time?
Just one more, Dave. You know, hopefully Nathan can get the hotel up and running, because if that comes on board, this is only going to help the conference center.
Yeah, especially with multi-day conferences.
Exactly, so that's, that's Michael Nolan's, the man of director, that's his, his hope and his dream, to see that happen.
Yeah, yeah, we're looking forward to that, hopefully it will. Moving on to the second item, Farmers Market proposed 100-foot pole shed and site improvements. So as you know, the city was awarded $33,000 from a Gaston County township grant to construct a 100-foot pole shed and improvements to the Gastonia Farmers Market for a total cost of $92,000. So the Farmers Market Board is willing to pay the full remaining balance of $59,000 to complete this 100-foot pole shed with the site improvements, and the city has proposed to use its own forces to provide engineering and labor to reduce the overall cost, but unfortunately, the Farmers Market Board at this time cannot pay the full amount in one lump sum, so they've requested the city to front the remaining portion of the project costs and ask the city if they can reimburse the city over a period of seven years in equal payments, which would be $6,200 per year at a 0% interest rate for a total of And it was decided by the committee to accept that proposal unanimously, and I put that forward in the form of a motion.
All right, so now, is this part of the 10A ed, it's a budget amendment, is this exactly what his motion was? Yes, sir. This is basically what it says, right, what he just said? Okay, all right. Does everyone have a copy of this? Second, Pierceall, second motion, discussion? Discussion?
Yes, sir.
I have some questions.
Is it going to be for Mr. Wong?
For Mr. Wong.
Okay. Went, Vince?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Vincent, I know you're in charge of this, and I wanted to find out just a few things. One, what is the ETA? When are you guys expecting to start it? And when are you expecting to complete this project?
From talking with engineering, it looks like we hope to have it done in 60 days. Some of it's dependent on getting the bids for the actual pole shed and when they can deliver it. But it looks like it'd be about 60 days from the start of it. So I'd say 60 days from August the 1st.
Okay, that's good. The other thing is, I was speaking with Carol, who's down at the Farmers Market.
Yeah, she manages the market, yeah.
Yeah, and also Mr. Pacehour, I think he's like the chairman, vice president or so of the Farmers Market there. And they were worrying about, you know, since they're going to put the 100-foot pole shed in, about bathrooms. Do they have to have more bathrooms added to it because they're adding more vendors?
I don't know the answer for 100% certainty. Talking with engineering and talking with some of the code enforcement people, it doesn't look like that will have to increase the bathrooms. Just because it's a permanent structure, but it's seasonal use. And I don't think, based on the square footage of adding it, it would require an additional bathroom.
Okay. Because that's one of their concerns that they were, you know, telling me about. Also, they're worried about the, not worried about it, but according to your, you had sent us a photo just recently of the pole shed itself.
Correct.
Underneath here, it's going to have concrete, is that it?
It's concrete with, it's 14 feet of concrete underneath and then a five-foot walkway that runs parallel with it. So people have access, and it's wheelchair accessible. And the, between the existing Farmers Market and the pole shed, that whole area is proposed to be paved and asphalt striping leading the way to the pole shed.
Are they going to have trucks that go behind this pole shed?
So if you look on that map, there's a proposed gravel driveway behind it, and that's just for the vendors to pull through and have access to the bed of their truck and to be able to set up their table.
Got you. Okay. And the other thing they were saying, they were saying that they would like to have a sign closer to the road so when people come down Long Avenue that they could see it says Farmers Market and maybe have it close enough to where the driveway's at so it can be a little bit easier accessible. I even found myself wondering which driveway to pull into, choosing the ones that has the most cars coming out. But they were saying.
Yeah, we recently updated the sign, and that was a shared cost between the Farmers Market, the county, and the city to make it a little bit more colorful and stuff like that. I haven't heard that concern myself, but we'll have engineering and public works walking that site with the Farmers Market to make sure the pole shed's where they want it and everything's, you know, what we agreed to. At that time, I wouldn't mind having that conversation of what we can do to move that sign. And, you know, possibly if there's extra, you know, this all is dependent on the price of the pole shed, the cost of asphalt and stuff like that. If for some reason we have funds available, we can, you know, come back and talk about using those funds to move that sign if need be.
The last thing was they were wanting that bus stop to be there with a covered, you know, facility. And I just wanted to find out of that, is that available? Can we do that?
I personally don't work with transit and stuff like that. I do know there's been discussions with Department of Health and Human Services and Access to kind of do that. They've worked, you know, they've worked really hard to do that EBT card and stuff like that at the Farmers Market. And to gain accessibility is very important. I just don't know the logistics of it. I think that's an ongoing discussion that we can have and look into it.
We're doing a transit study now, so it's a good time. We'll just have our consultants look at that. And buses go by, right by there, so we'll just take a look and see if that's possible.
Okay. And that's all the questions I have.
Michael, I think that, help me out on this.
There is a bus stop there.
I'm going blank. Former councilman that volunteers out there, that's basketball player. Lee asked me about that, and you checked into it for some reason, I mean, somehow or other, regarding a shed or a shelter. And what did you get out of that? What came back?
We did have some conversation, Mayor, about that. If I remember correctly, it was more of a stop and not so much a physical structure, but we're going to look at adding a shelter there. We add a few in the system every year, and we're just now doing an evaluation of all the shelters in the city. I think there's a little under 30 right now. Currently, our routes, our fixed routes, do not go directly by the Farmers Market.
Right.
They go close. But we were able to partner with the county to offer hourly pickup, and then they'll take them back to the Bradley Station.
Okay.
So the county's been picking that up. And then talking with Pat Johnson, it seems like that was successful this year. But we can certainly work with the county and see about having a shelter added down there at the Farmers Market.
Well, I think that's probably exactly what Lee and his, the volunteers, they were asking about for some of the people that, you know, had to stand out in the rain. So that Mike would do the job. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And to add to that, I think, you know, some of the concerns is how to do it because it's going to be a seasonal stop, possibly, and then Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday only. So we'd work and flesh out all those details, but it's something we could have ongoing conversation about.
All right. Yes, sir.
I had a question. Jim, who did you say was complaining about the sign?
You could see it, Todd, on this map. I was showing Dave.
Why don't they just did updates to the sign? I drive by that sign every day, and I think the sign looks really, really nice now.
The sign looks really, really nice, but it's really set back off of the road. That if you ride down this Long Avenue a little bit, you'll come across where it says Gaston Pickers. And I mean, that sign is right there. You could see it. It's real close to the road, and it's, you know, was it perpendicular to the road where it's just more visible? This one is like, kind of like a...
A V?
A V. So you really only see it if you stop and look at it. But if you're driving by, it's really, you know, you can even see how far off the road it is on this. It's just way laid back.
Don't they have a little sandwich board sign that they put out there during Farmers Market hours?
They do. It says open today.
Yeah, yeah. So I think that kind of is the temporary fix right now. Certainly is an inexpensive temporary fix, you know, as something that, you know, because it's a, you know, because it's a seasonal structure, because they have, you know, these limited part-time hours. I mean, I agree with you. I totally agree with you. But, you know, to spend a lot of money to, you know, that's a brick and mortar sign, if I'm not mistaken. So, I mean, that's pretty expensive. So to, you know, to take that sign and reconfigure it, you know, even if you made it like a T and brought a vertical piece out that was perpendicular to the road and then, you know, reconfigured the sign that way, probably several thousand dollars. So, I mean, I don't know who designed the sign. We could have all kinds of critical discussions about that, but I don't think that's the point of tonight's, you know, activity. But, you know, suffice it to be said that the sign could be improved upon at some point, but at what expense? So I think we have a motion and a second.
Well, yes, but I...
I'm sorry, I didn't see Robert.
That's okay.
Yeah. Robert, go ahead, then I'll...
Thank you. The only concern I have is sometimes when a body will go ahead and approve something like this, that the active pursuit of other monies and grants just kind of falls by the wayside because they've gotten this other piece of the puzzle. And I think we need to go ahead and take care of this, and we need to provide it. But is there any way we can add a friendly amendment that we will do this if the ongoing pursuit of grants or other monies is also adopted at the same time? So that it's not, so that pursuit of additional money that may come in and may take care of this is not just kind of forgotten about and dropped by the wayside? If that makes sense?
Yes, and Councilman, that was talked about at the committee meeting. Also, there's potential for improvements to the actual pole shed. During the committee, we talked about having electricity available, at least the line available. So if they do come up with additional money or have grant money, they can, you know, have it as a lighted structure or have electric there for fans and stuff like that. So it's an ongoing pursuit. I think, you know, that's a great idea, and it was flushed out at the committee, is any money is good money and it can help improve. And, you know, the more we can do with those dollars and leverage that money for additional money is a great idea.
Yes, sir.
The one thing I did check with them is if they could afford the $6,200 for the seven years. You know, I said, I don't want you guys to be strapped and, you know, this, that, and the other thing. They said, no, no, that's a fine figure. They said five years would be too short, and 10 years is just too long, seven is perfect, and that amount, they said they can handle. So they said with the added vendors coming in, they said they would have no problem with that.
This proposal came from them, so it was their idea for the seven years. And it's not costing the city anything.
Right, it's a 0% interest, though. It does cost them.
Like your bank.
Yeah.
Okay. Dr. Curlin, this, when you, a motion made and seconded, help me out if you will.
Yes, sir.
There was that motion that was made and seconded, the recommendation, action taken by your committee to recommend it, because we've also since then received the actual budget that we could pass right now, you know.
Well, I defer to legal counsel here as to how you want to handle the procedure.
I just wonder what your motion was, I guess.
I made a motion that was based off the committee's finding, but I think we would have to pass that first and then make the budget amendment because you need to have the first before the second. I mean, would be my logic anyway. But, you know, the committee made the motion. I proffered it this evening. Todd seconded it this evening. So if we pass that motion, then we could either take 10A now or we could get 10A.
Let's do the, we'll do that first.
Yeah, let's immediately do 10A after this vote, if it's popular.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor? Hand, please. It is unanimous. And now is there a motion to approve item 10A, which you have, the budget amendment?
So moved.
Which is three items, Mr. Mayor, the budget amendment, the management agreement for another 10 years, and then the actual reimbursement agreement.
You want three different?
No, I want one motion.
One, I'll look.
And I hear the motion, I just need to...
I'll second.
Who should the clerk credit the second to, Mr. Mayor?
Doesn't matter.
First one.
Gallagher's first.
Okay. Okay. Questions, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving on to item three, other matters. First, the follow-up on the city house acquisition at Firestone Water Tank. And in this case, the staff has explored several options concerning the house. And unfortunately, the most cost-effective option happens to be to demolish the house. You know, there's been conversations with Preservation North Carolina as they have some interest in some of the items within the house, I think fireplace mantles and things like that. And we are going to reach out to them to have any and all those artifacts removed by them prior to the demolition. There was no action required, this is for information only.
Right.
The second being on wayfinding signs, there's been an ongoing conversation between this committee and the planning department is in the process of surveying other cities with regard to wayfinding signs. So that's a conversation that's still in progress, and you'll get more about that as time goes on. There was a recommendation by the committee to look into upfitting the Welcome to Gastonia sign at the southern entrance of the city on Highway 321 northbound, coming from South Carolina into Gastonia or from the county into Gastonia. And the staff is looking into that. And then the city is also under active discussion at staff level for the UDO sign regulations. So this is an ongoing thing. They've looked at other cities for their new sign ordinances and not seeing any that were really sufficient to be adopted or modified for purposes. They're kind of taking a ground-up look at that and actually constructing those new ordinance amendments or just the whole ordinance to come into compliance with the new regulations federally. So, and that's also for information. Is there any other questions for the committee?
Any questions? Facilities?
Thank you very much.
Good report, sir. Thank you. Okay. Item 11 is the city attorney's report.
Mr. Mayor, just want to remind the council two items. One is the bill signing Thursday, 10:30 at the police department for Jessica's Law. It was originally passed in 2008, and then it was overturned as being broad, and this is the new version that is trying to address those constitutional concerns. And so the governor's office will be there. And also, I wanted to mention that on September 12th, Gastonia East Rotary is going to serve barbecue from Kyle Fletcher's to all of our public safety officers, fire and police at First United Methodist Church from 11 to 2. That's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Can we go?
I think so.
Thank you.
Civilian administration, right?
Porter and I don't like to miss too many of them. Okay. That it?
Yes, sir. You can come and help us serve. You can help us serve.
Man, I can do that. I can clean up, too, after you. Give me something to eat. Item 12 is the city manager's report. Mr. Munn? Glad to see you here.
Yeah. It's good to be here. I guess I should first report that I did have an opportunity to appreciate the city's, first of all, the city's clinic and the professional help that we get with our PAs and our nurses there. And then to also see GEMS in action. It's a wonderfully professional organization. I've taken those rides before, and they're wonderful. They're very, you always want to not be there, but if you have to be in that circumstance, you definitely appreciate the training, the equipment, and the dedication that those people have. They put the IV on you right away, they ask you all the pertinent questions, and you realize that you're living in a community where people have invested in first responders, public safety, and you're really gratified that you live here in Gastonia and Gaston County. So then I got also the opportunity to visit our emergency room. And again, our wonderful hospital and very professional folks, and I will have to report to you again, you know, very great customer service, but very glad to be out and will follow up with my doctor and try to keep my nose clean and not to do that again for a long time.
You don't get out much. Is that the only place you had to go?
The only form of excitement I can find.
Okay, all right.
A couple of other things. I really want to commend our police department and really the way our police department has worked with the GC3. And the GC3 organization, you can't say enough about the work that they have been doing, not only now this year, but they've been doing over the years. It's a group of people who are so committed to make this community better. And it's not just Gastonia, it's Mount Holly, it's Belmont, it's the whole county, and we're all working together. And it's, really gratified to see all of that. It's a part of Gaston together, and it's been a good story in our community for the last 20 or 30 years, really. And it's really good to see the kind of positive work that's being done there, and I applaud their efforts. Next, there is Gaston Outside, which is that, the Greater Gastonia Development Corporation member brought the consultant in to talk about trying to promote Gaston County. And so they're thinking about October being a month where they're going to have a theme, a go theme, this go outside, that's going to go from one part of the county to the other. And all the cities would participate, and we would work in our downtowns and our recreations. And all the cities would participate and we would work in our downtowns and our recreation facilities with Shield Museum and others and promoting Gaston Outside. So there's supposed to be some information coming to us and we're supposed to develop how it can best work for us and we'll try to report that back to you next month. And they're looking again at October for a run-out on that program. And in October, also, we're going to have, the Preservation North Carolina is going to have a neighborhood opening of some of their homes that they, they would like to be able to have, some of the houses that they've moved on Vance Street and some of the other, the work that's going on there and to have a celebration in Loray in, in October as well. So those are some of the things that are going on and, and I, I don't think I mentioned our fire department. I really appreciate the work that they did and they were also there and helping and, and again, it's, it's very gratifying to have that, that part of our community there for us when we need it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well, we're glad you're, we are glad you're here with us.
May I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
The manager?
Yes, sir.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but can you give us any kind of an update on arts, art space?
I actually talked to Ernest Sumner yesterday about it. They are, have, the, the application is in. We've actually received the receipt from the, the State Housing Finance Agency. That's the big money that they need. That's the, the multimillion dollar appropriation that they need. They are hopeful that in August, they will get the award. That's what they were trying for last year. So the award will come in August. They have also received some private grant funds as well and that, that has provided them some additional local match for the project. And I think the community foundation and the folks that are involved in this are very optimistic and are looking forward to success in, in August.
Thank you.
While, while we still have you presenting, may I ask you, and she, there's, I didn't get a chance to ask you before the meeting, but, but I have here the Gaston Family Health Services proclamation and it says if approved to be presented at the August 3rd meeting, which is the next meeting. Is, is this have to be approved with the council?
Which, wait, which is?
Candace has been, it's the 51 years, it's the Gaston Family Health Services proclamation regarding their, a week of August 7th through 13th, I see, that's why they, you don't know anything about it?
No, I don't, I don't, but I mean.
A proclamation.
A proclamation.
And I, and I think that I had gotten that email and she, but Candace has been talking about, but, but the reason I'm bringing it up now is of course, we, we're not going to meet again until after that, after that, or well, about that time, but when is the?
We meet August 2nd.
On the 2nd? Well, it being a proclamation just only, do you want to wait until then to approve it or you, would you like to approve it now?
Prove it on the week of presentation. Probably approve it by late in the afternoon.
Okay. All right, August 3rd, I mean, yeah, it says 3rd on here. Okay, we can do that if it's, he says present, approve it at that time, if that's okay. All right. City council report, we'll start with Mr. Humphries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if y'all called it or not, but on June 30th, there was a really nice article in the Gazette about our finance department. And I see Melody's here, talking about all their string of awards over the years. They did a really good job with the, with their article. They definitely deserve the recognition. And just for the council's information, I've been approved as the council representative to the Gaston County Transportation Board. And I'll, my first meeting with them will be in August. So if y'all have any county-type transportation issues, be sure and get them to me and I'll make sure they get talked about. And I was honored to have provided the invocation at the city's 4th of July celebration. Thank you, Todd, for putting my name in for that. I really enjoyed it. It was a great time, lot of nice people, lot of people, lot of vendors and I'm looking forward to next year, mainly some of the food, but I'm still looking forward to it. Last week, on Monday, I got invited to speak to a group, it's called Academy of the Gifted for Children. They're leasing space at St. Stevens AME Church, right across from City Hall, on the parking lot side. Really great bunch of kids, I really enjoyed it. They had some really good questions. The ages ranged from, I think, maybe five up to 17. There was probably 30 in the room. Some really good questions about government. The, the purpose was to explain what the council is, what they do, state government, just kind of an overview of things. But while I was there, I learned that the Academy of the Gifted, they, they're a 501(c)(3) organization. They operate 90% on donations. Next year, they're going to be starting a certificated school there for several young grade levels, elementary grade. But these kids learn piano, drums, guitar, modeling, acting, voice, arts, professional audio, the business of arts and entertainment, team building and anything else they can work into their busy day. They really can use some donations. They're in the process now of contacting a lot of corporate sponsors to help them out. They, they get a lot of their instruments donated, they're second-hand instruments, but they're refurbished. So it's a, it's a really great bunch of folks over there. I was, I was really warmly welcomed and it was, it was about the best hour I've had in my life in a couple of months. It was, I really enjoyed that. Finally, everybody remember, keep our military personnel in your prayers and our first responders and their families. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Now, Mr. Mayor, I want to compliment Todd and all the work he did July 4th. I know he was down there at 6:30 a.m., is that right? And stayed till about 10:30 that night?
About 12:31.
Till 31 o'clock, all day long, he and Melanie and their group. I think that's great that he would volunteer to do that. That's just tremendous amount of work. And I, I would go up and stay a couple of hours and leave and go home or somewhere around there and come back. I did that several times. He was always like on the stage making awards, doing, just continually doing something. And then of course, that's just that day, but before that, they had all the planning that had to go into that for months and months. I just think that's, that's tremendous on his part and I want to compliment, compliment him on that. Now, a couple of other things. There are two vacancies, alternate vacancies on the zoning board of adjustment. And I'd, and if you're an alternate and some regular member doesn't show up and you, you, the staff, Jason can call you to, or Mr. Gates could call you to go serve and have someone that's interested in being an alternate and that would be Sidney Craig. So I'd like to, unless somebody else wants to nominate somebody and make a motion to appoint Sidney Craig as an alternate, there are two positions, there are three, but one's filled and, but put him in one of those alternate positions.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Got a second, yeah. A motion by Pierce, hold on a second.
A motion by me, second by him.
Okay. We're close.
That's right.
Any, any discussion? All in favor, please? It is unanimous.
Okay. Couple of other things.
Yeah.
On the Historic District Commission, they do a great job. I've tried to recommend good people. The last two folks have been past presidents of homeowner associations and have fixed up homes and done a lot of things and, and I think we'll have a great Historic District Commission. And every so often, you rotate the chairman and vice chairman. And President Chairman's been chairman a couple of years and, and will remain on there. But I'd like to move that Wade White, who is the vice chairman, move up to chairman for one year and, and then appoint Vice Chairman Bill Blackwelder. So to, and then next year, Bill Blackwelder would come in and then you'd appoint another person, vice chair, and you keep rotating, you give everybody a chance to participate. And so I would put that in a motion that Wade White would be chairman for the next year and Bill Blackwelder, vice chairman for the next year.
Okay, I'll second. Mr. Mayor, in a second, Mr. Humphries, discussion? Yes?
Have they been approached and agreed to this?
Yeah.
Okay.
I've talked to both of them.
Okay.
Any other? All in favor, please?
Thank you, and I conclude my report.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Pierceel?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Porter. I certainly appreciate that. But speaking of July 4th, we did have our July 4th celebration again and it is a long day. I was there for quite a few hours, but even longer than I was, our police and our fire and also Parks and Rec. And I just would like to publicly, I see Assistant Chief Smith and Chief Walsh back there, thank them, their guys, they're, they're there before I get there and they're leaving after I leave. So they even have, and I know they rotate in shifts, but that, that's a long, long, hot day. And Councilman McKeer was right, there's a lot of planning that goes into that prior and they are participating in those meetings and dealing with their own personnel to make that happen. That's a lot of, lot of personnel that are usually on the streets in the neighborhood serving that are pulled into one location and, and that causes other people to have to work some, some additional shifts as well. Thank you for, for a very successful day without any incidents. And along those lines, I did mention Parks and Rec, they're a big part of that. Our traffic department, solid waste department, there are so many areas of our city that come together to make this event what it is. And this was the fifth year, sixth year, I can't even remember now, we've been doing it so long, but, and we've yet to have an incident and, and that's a testament to how hard these city departments work. So I certainly just want to thank them and let the public know what a big part they are, even though they may not be seen. It has been a while since our last meeting. We were privileged to welcome Springfield to Gastonia. Many of you will remember that we went to Springfield last year, they came here this year. And it's a little bit ironic, when Gastonia went to Springfield, the actual two teams that were to play the historic game way back when were not able to play in Springfield because the game was rained out. The, they were able to play here in Gastonia and it ended in a tie. So they're still not a loser for that game. So we, we thought that was a little bit ironic, but in a good way. We had a great time. Springfield was so appreciative of the hospitality and there are already talks on, on this being a continuing event, whether it be every other year, every four years, but it, it will be a continuing event. It's certainly remarkable and a, a good history lesson for the, the young boys and, and guys that are playing on these teams. You know, we as adults can see it and recognize it, but they're actually learning and hearing about it for the first time, so it's, it's really an experience for them. Let's see, what else we got? I was able to stop by and meet part of the owners and some of the, what will be employees for the new brewery, that'll be at 321, right there at the old dealership, old car dealership. Really good group of people, they're excited about coming to Gastonia. They're already working on some contracts to distribute their product to some of the other counties in North Carolina. So that's going to be kind of nice that, that we're going to actually have Gaston County or Gastonia exports to the rest of North Carolina and the surrounding area.
Councilman Pierceel, Mayor Portim, remind us where the brewery is going to be for?
It said 321 and is that still long right there? Has that become airline? I don't remember.
The old Craig Motor Company.
Correct. Craig Motors.
And they're, they're working hard. Let me tell you, it is hot in that building. I don't know how they're working in there, it is hot. But they're working hard, ready to get it open. So that, that's exciting for Ward 4, to have a business of, of that magnitude, moving there and redoing that building, giving it a new face, new life.
What's, what's the name of the?
I, I don't know what the actual name's gonna be.
Okay.
It is.
Christie or Michael?
I think it's Cavendish.
Cavendish?
Yes, the last, is the gentleman's last name that's part of that. It was at the technical review committee this week, so plans have been submitted.
And I don't know if I'm letting the cat out of the bag, but one of the owners is not actually from this area and owns a business in another area, lives in another area and has decided that he'll be moving his other business and his home to Gastonia.
Smart move.
Do you think one of the reasons why they chose to locate here is because of the quality of the water that we have here?
Probably.
I thought so.
The, the other owner lives in the Historic District here in Gastonia, so.
Ah, okay.
That's wild. But it, it could have a lot to do with our water quality.
It's important when it comes to, you know, any beverage.
They'll be right there, they can see the new treatment, water treatment facility, so who knows? But also a couple of other things that have been going on since we last met. The Highland reunion happened and Danielle Barber was instrumental with that, with some funds from Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Wonderful event, it was held at the Irwin Center, it was all day, it was music, food, really good food, basketball games, all kinds of health initiatives. I even had my blood pressure and stuff checked and it was a little high that day, so thought maybe it was the heat. But a lot of good things for, for the residents in that area. So that was a huge, huge success and we're hoping that will become an annual event as well for the Highland community. I was able to fill in for the mayor for the grand opening of Publix. It was a bit early in the morning for grocery shopping, but let me tell you, they were lined up to do it. So that was really nice and a, a good group there, met the manager and some of the other people. And speaking of grand openings, I also attended the grand opening of the French Quarter, right here in downtown. It's located right there on Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Way, just down from the conference center, about midway between conference center and Life of Pi. So it's a, it's a new store that's opened, a very nice store, that's a local owner from the Historic District, she's opened that. And earlier in that day, there was the Peace and Unity Gathering, right there on Franklin. My neighbor, Councilman Kellogg helped put that together, but that was really neat to see, just people from all walks of life in Gastonia coming together, standing there and just saying, you know, we're one city, we're together and we're supporting everybody. So that, that was very nice to see that. Other than that, I think that's really all I have. I do appreciate Councilman Humphries leading our prayer. Part of the July 4th was, our opening ceremony was honoring our Vietnam veterans and we were able to have a penning ceremony for some of those veterans. Scott Wilson saying God bless America. Councilman Humphries led us in prayer and we were able to pin some of the veterans and we think that's going to be a yearly tradition now. So we're looking forward to honoring some of our military each year in that ceremony. So I know that was a lot, but it's been a while since we met and that's what I've been up to.
Well, it's sort of exciting there, the, the reports so far. I mean, it's going to get better, I'm sure, but as we go along, but so far, you know, the city manager told us how wonderful it was inside the ambulance and at the emergency room and now you're telling us what, what, how nice the brewery was. Mr. Gallagher, what you got?
Yeah, getting better. Yes.
Well, my family and I got back from Paris. Three things I could say is, you know, they say bonjour, c'est va. That's colosseum, there you go. Three things I noticed about Paris is, one, a lot of people smoke. I was surprised, even at restaurants. Two, didn't see any pickup trucks. It was odd. Just odd. Not just Paris, even on the outside of Paris. And the color of the cars are real bland. They're either white, black or gray. There's no red ones, there's no green ones, there's no blue ones, just a few things. It was pretty boring. We, the other chief, I took a picture of one of their fire trucks. They're small. Matter of fact, we did this Airbnb thing where you rent out a person's apartment and we were right next door to the fire department. I was like, great, this is going to be noisy. I was like, great, this is going to be noisy. They don't use their sirens when they leave. They use them real seldom, and I was like, this is just too, you know, I don't know if they just use them in traffic or what, but it was just, didn't hear them the whole week we were there. I was down in Nice a week prior to the attack. My family and I were planning on being there for Bastille Day, but my mom had said, you know, your dad's 90th birthday is coming up, August 2nd, and gentlemen, I will miss next meeting, I just wanted to give you a forewarning. It is his 90th birthday, and I will be there. But yeah, that Nice attack, you know, just seeing it on TV, just seeing where you were, and it's just bizarre, just really sad. We came home, I was able to, Thursday night, go out to the, the GC3 had a vigil at the church for the five slain Dallas officers, and the two people from Minne, one person from Minnesota and the other one from Louisiana shot as well. The one thing that I could take away from the GC3 was, you know, they said, someone up there had said that, you know, we could have had this at two different churches. You know, they could have had the five Dallas officers who were slain have a vigil at one church and have the two people that were slain in Minnesota and Los Angeles at a separate church. But by bringing it together and, you know, having the vigil and having that, those difficult discussions was really poignant and very, very good. It's a shame that, once again, we had officers go down in Louisiana. And I'm just glad that Gastonia has taken a step in the right direction and opening up their churches and speaking not only to the Gastonia Police, but also the Sheriff's Department, Mount Holly, and all the other police departments that were there as well. So that, that's excellent. The other thing, chief, the impro, you know, I saw in the Gazette, the impromptu basketball game that some of the police officers were having with some of the childrens in one of the areas. The thing I liked about it most was that the residents called it in to the Gazette. Wasn't the police looking to try to get publicity saying, hey, look at us, but the residents themselves said, these guys came down here to play with the children, and that was really nice. You know, that was a real act of kindness, and I just want to say that's commendable. Thank you. The other thing is, I'm on, I help out raising money for Shiny Hope Farms, and they're out in Mount Holly and also in Charlotte. Well, they're partnering now with Bit of Hope Branch, it's right here in Gastonia. So it's nice to see that they're going to start broadening out and start helping kids here in Gaston County, Cleveland County, and also down in South Carolina. And last thing, Ed, you were mentioning about Gaston outside. Well, this past Saturday night, there was a lot of people outside downtown at the pavilion. They were running around with their phones looking for Pokemon. So I just think that's, you know, something to, you know, get kids going. I know my son was out there, so anyway, that is my report, Mr. Mayor.
The one that was in my yard got captured.
Oh, wait, wait, he's captured? And there's one by your yard?
It was in my yard.
And which one? Do you know, you sure?
Oh, I don't know which.
Okay.
Been captured, don't come looking for it.
Okay, Doctor?
Many things have been duly discussed, so I will say no report.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to keep it kind of brief, many of the events and things that have been spoken here, I also attended, and, but I just wanted to say a few comments also about the vigil that the GC3 had, had put on. And it's really moving to see the community come together the way it did. We see other communities in our country that tend to divide and point fingers when things like this happen, but our community tends to come together and draw its strength from one another, which is a real testament to the people that live here and especially our, our clergy community and our, our police and first responders. They do a heck of a job being out there and being in the community. And I think that's where some of these other communities fail, is that their, their police and their firemen and their, their city officials, they're, they're not a part of the community. And we have always tended to be a part of the community. We, we know our neighbors, our, our police know what's going on, our fire department is out there doing things in our communities, and, and that really matters, and it makes a difference when these type of things happen. I was privileged to get to say a few words, but you know, I, one of the things I was saying to somebody this past week is, I don't think anybody has the answers, but I think a step in the right direction is what Gastonia has been doing and is doing. So I just want to, I just want to say thank you to our, our first responders, our police, our fire, those people that are on the front lines, literally putting their wives on the, on the line. It's not a job I could do, and I thank God that there's somebody that can do it. And finally, I just want to, just want to say that, that what we really need in this world is peace and respect for one another. And I find that more and more in Gastonia, and I'm just so proud of, of our city. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, well put. And as a quick follow-up on that, piggyback, at that vigil Thursday night that you're referring to, of course, I mentioned it also that, that many years ago, many years ago, back in the 70s, Mayor Earl Rose appointed me to the Human Relations Commission, and it was formed, and it was Dr. Cleveland Floyd and next mayor, future mayor, T. Jeffers, and also, well, there are several of us that, that formed it back then, and that's, that's exactly what Councilman is saying, that's part of what everyone needs. And I'm so proud of Gastonia and Gaston County, and that was a, and that was a great group the other night. They, they were, the mayor from Cherryville and Mount Holly and numerous others were there, and it was a group. Okay, thank you, everyone. I want to, I thought about saying this last couple of meetings that we've had, and now we're on TV. I feel an obligation as, as stepping out of the line a little bit as, as mayor, and I'm primarily talking, it looks like, to us, for senior citizens. There has been, and I've had some calls and I've had some conversations, so I'm, I'm really speaking to our friends in Gaston County all over, is this seems to be a, getting worse and worse about the robocalls and about your calls, and they primarily target senior citizens. But not only the robocalls, but going, the sheriff's at the door, going to take, "I'm with the IRS," and "you owe money." Well, you owe the money or not. They tell you you owe money, and they say they're knocking on your door, they're going to arrest you. And some of the things that I would have said and did probably would say, I can't say here, but I think that it's, it's a shame, and it's made it as far as the national news now, they're talking, they said it's about 70% more. And so I'm, I'm suggest, number one, ladies and gentlemen, they make it extremely clear, make it extremely clear that the IRS is not going to call you. They, they're not going to call you, period. They'll send you a letter, they will not call. And the ones I get, I just usually tell them I'm going to turn it, just turn the number over to the Attorney General's office, and they usually hang up on that. But it's getting, it's getting, and then some other things I say. It's, it gets worse by the, seems like by the day, and surveys and any, you won this, and you're going on a trip, and you're done. And the other day, the lady, her son's in going to jail. She didn't send $9,000, and she did. And so, but they somehow got it back. This is, you know, it almost, well, I could go on and on and on. I just want people to be, please hang up. If they start talking to you and they want to take a survey or they want, you've won this and that, you haven't. You've lost. And so just say, please do not call this number, don't even say please, don't call this number back, and hang up. And that's all I know to do. Now, Chief Smith, you might could tell me some other things, but I, I just know that a lot of people, not a lot, but some people are telling me this has just gotten out of hand, and it's almost on a daily basis. Having said that, ladies and gentlemen, there, it is 7:20, and is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Second. Okay, thank you.